To the April 13th, 2022 meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission. In taking role, Mr. Curtis is not present and he's excused. He notified us of his inavailability. I see we have no minutes available for the April 6th meeting. We'll review those at a later date. Mr. Miesmer, is there any correspondence unrelated to the topics at hand tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to mention that we will be having a special meeting next week, next Wednesday, on the 20th. Otherwise, no correspondence. Thank you.
All right. We'll proceed with new business, item D, public hearing, CUP 2022-0002, Samish Early Learning Center. Ms. Grage, do you have a presentation?
Hello all, it's Emily. I will be presenting on the Samish project.
Good evening.
All right, so welcome to our Planning Commission meeting. This is an open record public hearing to get the Planning Commission's recommendation on the proposal at hand. So this is a conditional use permit that was submitted on behalf of the Samish Early Learning Center project for the Samish Indian Nation. So the request was for a conditional use permit along with the site plan review for the construction of a new early learning center. The project will propose the construction of a roughly 4100 square foot early learning facility with 400 square feet of covered play area on site. This is a two lot project, so the south lot is where the structure will be and then the property to the north, which is north of the alley to be improved, will be a 19-stall staff parking lot. So a little background on this project, there was a nursery structure, as you can kind of see on those top two pictures, on the south property, which we did issue a demolition permit over the summer. On November 30th, we held our pre-application meeting to discuss this project and on January 20th of this year, we held our neighborhood meeting. On February 1st, the formal conditional use permit along with the site plan review was submitted for application and deemed complete on February 9th. To consolidate the process, we went ahead and did a notice of application and public hearing joint, so that way there was only one public notice with the comment period that ended on March 16th. So a little bit about the project, as I said, it'll be 4100 square foot roughly early learning facility with multiple classrooms, a little kitchen, community type area with some offices and bathrooms. And then on the outside, there is a pretty cool little tricycle track that'll be for the kids in the fully fenced play area, along with that property to the north having the parking lot for staff. And the picture on the right will show the proposed landscaping for the project, along with the elevations for the proposed building. It should be noted that a large proponent of this project is street improvements to both, or actually 15th, 16th, along with D Avenue, which will include pushing through 16th Street because currently it just dead ends to the west of this project. And this will expand it all the way to D Avenue and provide more traffic flow. And along with that, it includes an additional 13 on street parking spaces, so this project pretty much benefits from a total of 32 proposed parking spaces, so parking should not be an issue here. So as explained, this does require conditional use permit per 1941-040. The project is zoned residential low density A, which as you can see requires that conditional use permit. For this facility, because it will be for over 12 children, it's checked in as a daycare two facility, which again requires that CUP and is required to meet the code criteria of 1936-040, along with 1944-010B, which is specific for these daycare two facilities. So some key project takeaways, just to summarize it real fast for you. Again, daycare twos are permitted in the art two-way zoning so long as they have the approval of a conditional use permit. Based on staff's review, the new facility meets the CUP and site plan review criteria. The required landscaping and frontage improvements would be completed prior to occupancy of the new facility. And the drop off and pickup for the students would be through the alley and the new parking lot, so you won't have cars backed up on 15th or 16th or D. They'll kind of be funneled through that parking lot, which is a one-way parking lot. To speak a little further about that, all staff would have off-street parking spaces. I do know that that has been a issue at the other facility of the Samish down D with concerns of staff parking on the street and making it a, getting in the way along the corner, so it's hard to see as you're turning out onto D, but this project should not have that problem. And further, no public comments were received for this. So a couple of conditions of approval I just want to highlight. We did have a little back and forth, myself with the applicant, just to clarify, as part of the project, they are required to do either type A, B, or C landscaping along with a fence, which the fence is also required for these types of facilities. However, there's not a lot of clarity in the codes when it talks about whether the landscaping buffer has to be on the outside of the fence or inside the fence. So as a way to allow some flexibility, the applicant has proposed to communicate with the neighbor and see if they'd be willing to let them plant some landscaping on their property rather than having it just be a fence with the landscaping on the inside. But the main intent here is just to kind of soften the look of it and provide some sort of noise buffer. So the condition is the type C landscape buffer along the western property line shall be installed on the east side of the proposed perimeter fence unless the adjacent property owner does allow the required buffer landscaping to be installed, excuse me, installed on their property. And with that, we would just ask for a signed easement agreement, which would include the maintenance responsibilities for the proposed landscaping, and that would need to be required prior to the final occupancy of the facility being granted. And similar to condition we had on the last school facility is if the city receives an excess of reasonable complaints in regard to the traffic that's generated from this new facility, we then have the right to request a traffic mitigation plan to provide some sort of clarity and mitigation for that. With that all being said, and based upon the application findings of fact conclusions of the staff report, I recommend that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the CUP, subject to the proposed conditions of approval. And I will pass it over for hearing and deliberation. Thank you so much.
And do commissioners have any questions or comments?
Go ahead, Ms. Mollinow.
I want to go back to the landscaping plan because when I saw that in the language, I still had problems with it. How does the applicant buffer against the property next door when it's using the property next door as the buffer? That seems to be incongruity in either in the code or in the application of the code.
Well, I can provide a little clarity to that and then I can also pass it over to Kim. She's with the Samish Indian Nation to provide a little more clarity, but the issue we're kind of contemplating is if you have the fence with that five-foot buffer to the east, that's the landscaping, it would be very challenging to maintain that landscape buffer without trespassing onto the neighboring property. So this just provides a little more flexibility and the authority for, you know, the maintenance of the proposed landscaping as well. So Kim, I don't know if you have anything further to add to that?
Yeah, just basically what you said is whenever I was looking at it closely when you asked me about it, I think you asked me if the landscaping was on the inside or the outside, and I said, well, it shows it on the outside. But with it being on the outside and the adjacent property is a neighbor's property, it's not a street frontage or, you know, public easement or anything, I was just looking and I said, well, that's kind of strange that I would have to, sorry about that. I would have to basically trespass on the neighbor's property to do maintenance if I needed to come in and weed or it would be hard to walk down the middle of this little buffer and get that all. And so I just had the idea, I haven't talked to the neighbors yet, would it be possible for us to negotiate with them that, yes, they would probably like some screening of the fencing, but would they like the screening to be like on their property and where they would take over the maintenance of it whenever the project was complete? And that would prevent them having strangers coming onto their property to maintain landscaping or if not coming onto their property, getting like really close to their property. You know what I mean? I would feel weird if I had like all of a sudden a bunch of workers were in my backyard or almost in my backyard while I'm drinking my coffee on Saturday morning or whatever. So it was just a thought to work out with the neighbors and if that's not acceptable to them, then we will have it all on our property.
Any other questions, comments? With that, we'll open the public hearing. Do we have any members of the public wishing to make a presentation?
Mr. Chair, we have five members of the public in attendance, but no hands are raised.
We'll give them a few seconds to indicate their interest in speaking if they wish. None being observed, we will close the meeting and proceed to deliberation. Do commissioners have any further issues or questions? I'd like a little clarification about the issue that was raised earlier for the buffer. It appears that the buffer is intended to mask the fence itself, is that correct, and under normal circumstances?
I would say yes, however, our code does not specifically say that. It is a weird little gap that Libby and I stumbled upon when we were reviewing this because it just says that you have to do a five-foot wide planted buffer, but it doesn't specify where that has to be other than on one side of the fence. So as Kim had proposed, I mean, it does make the most sense to have it on the outside so that way it's a little more visually appealing than, you know, a six-foot tall cedar fence. However, I do, again, speaking with Libby when we were kind of hashing this out, part of the plantings are going to be trees so that if it is put inside the perimeter fence, those tall trees will provide some sort of, you know, visual aesthetic as well as, again, provide a little bit of a buffer from, you know, the neighboring noise. But definitely something to consider for a code modification to provide some clarity.
Ms. Mollinow, did you get your question answered?
Mostly I did. I just have a difficulty asking the neighbors to provide the buffered amount of land and not less, they're going to either rent the land for the buffer in perpetuity, buy the land for the buffer, or, and since the code is rather vague on that, will this be resolved at the building permit review level as the conditions indicate?
Yes. So as part of the condition of approval and prior to granting that certificate of occupancy for the structure, all required landscaping does have to be in place. So with that, if it does end up going down the path of them having to work with the neighbor to get some sort of agreement recorded, that would need to be done prior to final sign-off of the project.
Thank you. Dr. Martin, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Has the city considered the precedent of this landscaping on a neighbor's property and what that might mean to future projects?
I can't speak to that because, again, it was something that just kind of came up during the review. I think kind of the main intent here, again, is just to prohibit trespassing onto the neighbor's lot, having to maintain this required buffer per the code. So just having a little bit of flexibility in that condition to kind of work with it and we can see what ends up working best for future projects. And again, this is something that we can take a look at and revise the code accordingly to provide a little more clarification.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Miesmer.
Thank you. We've had a few circumstances where the landscaping in a situation like this, which is to screen different uses. So in this case, you've got the residential zone and then you've got the daycare use, so it's a screening between the two. It could be on either side of the fence technically, but what's being proposed though is the condition is that a signed easement agreement. And with that easement agreement, that allows the parties to maintain it and go onto the property, maintain it, replant vegetation as needed and so forth. And so that's negotiated prior to them getting the building permit and/or at the same time as getting the building permit.
So if I understand what you're saying, the easement would be provided by the adjoining property owner to allow the permit requestor to access the five-foot strip and do maintenance on it?
That's correct.
Thank you. I think that resolves the question for me. Ms., Dr. Martin? Okay.
Um, excuse me. Kim, did you have something you wanted to add? I see your hands raised.
Yes. So it also, well, either it could be that way or in talking with the neighbors, you know, I was just kind of thinking of like what I would want. If the fence is not on the property line, you know, perhaps they would prefer to maintain that section of the buffer for their own privacy.
So are you suggesting then that in lieu of them granting you an easement to get onto that land to maintain it, that you would grant them an easement to use that land as that buffer as adjoining their property line, essentially being to the west side of the fence, which would be five feet inside your property line?
Yes, I haven't spoken with them yet, but that's something that we would work out to both of our satisfaction before the building permit stage.
I would clarify that it doesn't necessarily need to be the granting of an easement, but rather some sort of recorded agreement, just, you know, discussing how maintenance will take place or the proposed landscaping that, you know, both parties would sign. And again, that gets recorded and would show up on title.
Ms. Mollinow.
Would such an agreement then be attached, such as a deed covenant, to the property and the property description?
Probably, it wouldn't show up in the description, but it would show up on a title report, just showing that, you know, there is some sort of recorded agreement with the neighboring lot, but it shouldn't really create any sort of title burden or anything.
Okay, thank you. Just then to summarize to make sure I have this clear, the potential exists for some kind of agreement to be made that maintains the buffer and the fence on the property line of the, on the property of the permit requestors, but allows them to make an agreement with the adjoining property owners as to how that's maintained and that that would be, resolving that question is part of, would be required as part of the process of obtaining a permit?
That's correct.
That is correct, yeah.
Dr. Martin?
If you would just clarify for me, is there, maybe this is a dumb question, is there a reason why the fence couldn't be moved in five feet so that the buffer is on the Samish Indian property?
So as it's currently proposed, that five-foot buffer is on the property, but again, we run into that issue of it'll be really challenging to kind of weave between your five, you know, on your five-foot wide buffer through the trees to maintain it without stepping onto the neighboring lot.
So, but could the fence be moved in?
Essentially, but I think we may still kind of have a little bit of an issue, only because I learned this from the last project, that your amount of outdoor space is, kind of dictates how many kids you can have, so by having as much outdoor space as possible. But again, I can defer that to either Peter or Kim.
Sorry about joining late. I was having technical difficulties and then the link wouldn't work, so I apologize. Ms. Peter Carletti, I'm the architect for the Samish Nation on this project. The thing is, is in a lot of codes, a lot of times with a buffer, usually a lot of times if you have a fence, then you don't need a vegetative buffer too. And in this case here, the way the code is written, and Emily's kind of shaking her head, it doesn't read that way. So even if you have a fence, then you still have to have the buffer. Most people wouldn't do a fence. We're doing the fence because of the children. We have to secure the site with the kids. It's part of, it's part of our requirement with the children to be licensed. We have to have a secure outside, outdoor play area. And the challenge just kind of comes in is like, what Emily is saying, is if we have the buffer, you can move the fence, but if you move the fence in too far, then we cut down the play area, which then impacts how many kids we can have, she's correct. At the same time, if we leave it where it's at and then it's a five-foot buffer, then it does become challenging. And if I have to go maintain it, then I have to go walk on the neighbor's property in order to prune those trees or do whatever. So it's a little bit of an unique situation that this particular code, the way the code is written in Anacortes, doesn't really recognize this situation because usually in most codes it will say either a vegetative buffer or a six-foot high side obscuring fence. It's like either A or B. Your code doesn't say that. Am I correct in kind of what I'm saying, Emily?
Yes and no. So we do have, depending on your adjoining zoning, there, in most cases, it is you either do type A, B, C, or fence, but in this case, it's and fence. But also this fence is required. But I also think for the most part, when we do see these types of projects, it's more of a mixed use where you don't have this giant huge fence that's actually trying to like keep kids inside. And it's usually adjoining an alley or a right-of-way or something, as we see along the D Avenue frontage, or excuse me, the 16th Street frontage. That's kind of more of where this intent of screening the buffer, or excuse me, screening the use with that buffer. But again, I think even with the landscape buffer inside the fence, it does still provide kind of the intent of allowing some screening and separation. And Shade?
Mr. Juretsky.
Yeah, I guess I'm a little surprised that the proponent hasn't approached the neighbor and found out what it's going to take to have an agreement. It seemed to me before I ever got this far down the project, I would want to have some of those ducks in a row. And again, I'm a little surprised by, well, we haven't approached them yet about what's going to make them happy or how we work this out.
But this just came to my attention like a couple of weeks ago when Emily contacted me regarding and asked me about the fence. Before that, I hadn't really noticed. I inherited this project late in the process and I hadn't really noticed that the, how the buffer was on that west edge of the property. So that's the only reason that it wasn't, you know, that I didn't broker it before, but I do intend to.
Okay, well, thank you. Other than that, I think it's a great, a great site plan and, you know, the way you've taken care of the parking and the traffic. We just recently had a proposal with the same sort of usage, but the applicant was, you know, limited by the amount of dirt or ground they had to work with. Really do like the plan you guys have there.
Mr. Chair? There's somebody with their hand raised. I'm not sure if they are from the project or from the public. And they just lowered their hand.
Okay, thank you.
And they just raised their hand again. Their name is Kimberly Anderson, and I'm not sure if they're part of the project or not.
Do we know if they're a project participant? Or a neighbor or what?
Kimberly is the chief operations officer for the tribe.
Yes.
Okay, I will add her as a panelist. She has her hand raised.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry, Chair, can you hear me?
I hear you now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we were aware that the Head Start standards for an early childhood learning center is 45 square feet, 45, am I saying it right, Peter? 45 square feet per child outdoor space. So we have to, we have to provide enough outdoor space according to the regulations of the funded, the grant funds that we're under. Which I think if we, I'm not sure if we have the buffer inside the fence, if that takes away from that, Peter, and we may have to go back to Office of Head Start to see if we have to factor that in. I think it may hinder, it may hinder some of that regulation, so we may have to look at this a little bit further.
Yeah, I'm not sure without really kind of looking at all those calculations and such, but I think we had a little bit of excess space, but I guess I'm more like Kim McKenon and I think that, I don't think this is that big of a deal and probably would be easier if the buffer stayed inside our property area. To me, it takes up less room that way and it, it's, that way it can be maintained. And I know that the neighbor was at our House Neighborhood Meeting and they were very complimentary of the project and they had no objections to it. And I don't see this stumbling block of, you know, if we didn't have the buffer on the opposite side of the fence, I don't think it's going to be a big deal to them. They actually said you're going to have a fence there and said yes, and they were happy about that. So I don't think it's going to be a challenge.
So to clarify, you're now proposing the fence be on the property line and the buffer be inside the fence on the permit ease property?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So the condition that's being proposed is that in fact the landscaping would be on the inside of the fence. Fence would be on the property line, landscaping on the inside of the fence unless they can arrange some easement with the neighbor. So at this point for us moving forward, it meets the code?
That was my, the basis for my question, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any further comments or discussions? I will entertain a motion at this point.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve, let's see, I lost it. CUP 2022-002, Samish Early Learning Center with the recommendations of staff, the conditions that the staff recommend.
To clarify, you're recommending, you move that we recommend approval of this by the council?
Yes, sorry.
Second. Shall we take the roll?
Do you want to vote? Yes. Mr. Mollinow?
Yes.
Mr. McKenzie?
Yes.
Madam Ruther?
Yes.
Mr. Juretsky?
Yes.
Madam Martin?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move right along to our next item. This is old business, continuing update, discussion, and possible recommendation on the Shoreline Master Program update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to work on getting my PowerPoint presentation up on the screen. I'm just going to work on getting my PowerPoint presentation up on the screen. Okay, that was easier than I expected. So, um, good evening, everyone. Um, here, happy to be here this evening with you to talk about the Anacortes Shoreline Master Program periodic update. Um, tonight, we will be looking at the second draft, the comments that we received on the second draft of the SMP Planning Commission could choose to deliberate and potentially make a recommendation to the city council. So a quick agenda. Um, first, just do a quick little recap about where we've been through this process. Um, again, talk about the second draft of the proposed amendments, um, along with the comments that we received and staff responses, and a staff recommendation, and then deliberation and recommendation by Planning Commission. So this is a timeline showing when we started this process way back in 2019, pre-COVID times. Um, and we have, um, over the next several years, developed a first draft, had public outreach, um, a public comment period, a joint public hearing with the Department of Ecology and the Planning Commission. Um, we've had an initial determination of consistency issued by Ecology. Um, and then in February of this year, the Planning Commission met a couple of times in February to take a look at, get a refresher on that second, or on the first draft, excuse me, um, and talk about the initial determination by Ecology, what those, um, their required and recommended changes were. Um, and then we integrated those changes into a second draft. Put the second draft out for public comment. Um, public comment period ended on March 9th, 2022. And here we are tonight on April 13th to review the public comments. So the second draft of the proposed Shoreline Master Program amendments were included integration of the DOE required and recommended changes and some additional clarifications. Um, the additional documents that were put up for a public review as part of the public comment period was the draft Anacortes Municipal Code, 1972 shorelines, and that is the document where the shoreline regulations are codified into the Unified Development Code. Um, and then the draft shoreline element of the comprehensive plan was also available for comment, and that consists of the shoreline goals and policies. Comment period lasted from February 16th to March 9th. And we received three public comments. And just the, the key ideas in the comments. Um, we, we put out the second draft so that folks would have an opportunity to comment on the changes that we made between the first draft and the second draft. And we didn't get any comments on those changes, but we did get some additional comments just on the, on the overall Shoreline Master Program. We received one letter that had concerns about costly regulatory burdens and lengthy permitting processes impacting the viability of existing marinas. And, um, we had a couple of comments about the Shoreline Master Program and how it addresses climate change and sea level rise. So this is the comment summary and response matrix that was developed, um, by the Watershed Company and city staff. And this matrix was not included in your original packet, but it was made available, um, on Friday. And we noted that in the, in the packet, that it would be available at that time. And I, if you don't, if you need a copy, I do have some over here in case you weren't able to get a copy. Anybody need one? No? Okay, perfect. So, um, I thought that I would just go through briefly the comments that we received, the responses and the resulting staff recommendations for Planning Commission's consideration. Um, so this matrix is showing the comment number, the, the areas of the Shoreline Master Program that the comment relates to, who the commenter was, what the comment was, and then the response. Um, and so that first one, as I mentioned, was concerned about um, processing of permits for in-water structures and that it's a very complicated and difficult process to, to get through. Um, there are a lot of regulatory agencies involved and environmental considerations that have to be addressed. And, um, this comment was requesting that the city Shoreline Master Program try and identify what the different permitting timelines and coordination between agencies that would result in a more efficient permit process. Um, and so the city's response is that, um, the city does have a amount of time that we are required to issue permits or make a decision on a permit application, and that's 120 days. Um, and so that is established in the city code, and that is what the, the city goes by for our portion of shoreline permitting. And unfortunately, we just don't have very much influence on how the state and federal regulatory agencies do their work or the amount of time that it takes to process regulations. So we aren't proposing any changes in, in response to that particular comment. And please feel free to stop me if you have questions or want to talk about any of these.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Graff. So I, I do think that Mr. Wilkerson does bring up some valid points here. And I would be interested to know, I mean, the 120 days, was that an arbitrary number? Is that a best practice based on other municipalities? Is that a metric that has been determined based on three, six, nine, 12, several years of data that you've collected on prior permit processing?
The 120 days is established by state law, so that's the...
Not to exceed 120 days?
Correct.
Does the city have any idea what your average number is? Is it 120? Is it more than 120?
You know, really, um, it, it's hardly ever more than 120. Um, it's, it's usually less. And that is, 120 days is the amount of time that the staff and the city, the ball is in our court, basically. We're reviewing an application, or there's a public comment period, or things like that. The, the amount of time, if we say applicant, we need additional information from you to review, that clock stops, and so those days aren't included.
I mean, I, I appreciate there's a lot that goes into that 120 days, right? It's not just, it's staff, it's staff availability, it's COVID, hopefully COVID no longer, but it's meeting schedules, it's having a quorum for a planning commission, et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, I'm hopeful that the city does have a goal, if you will, right, to not ever exceed 120 days. And in, in best cases, get that number down to something less than 30. Because if we have 120, and then the county has 120, and then the state has 120, that ends up being a year now. And I think, you know, when somebody like a landowner, or a marina owner, or whomever, is trying to do something to, to make things better, the last thing we want to do is, you know, bungle that up by adding a whole lot of added time, and which goes into costs, and now it becomes cost ineffective and prohibitive. And, you know, it's almost easier for some of these folks to not do anything because they can't afford to go through the permitting and the bureaucracy to finally be able to buy the stuff that they need to do to make the project go. And I just, I'm hopeful that we're sensitive to that. That we are, but, you know, I think, I think we should be sensitive to that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Meesmer.
I'm going to throw the federal government and the state under the bus. So first of all, state law. Um, for instance, with a shoreline's permit, which is what we're talking about here, we have the maximum 120 days. Our typical review turnaround time is three weeks. Um, and then we also have to follow other state law requirements. For instance, if I remember correctly, the comment period required for a substantial shoreline development permit is 30 days. And so we have all these other things that we have to add in there. Where this gets really complicated, though, is when it gets to the federal level. When this leaves us, and these folks start working with feds, which we always tell them, start now. When you submit to us, start now. And then they start talking with the local Army Corps of Engineers representative, then that gets them going. But those projects still take a year when it gets to the, to the Army Corps of Engineers, unfortunately. They're so backed up, I've got people telling me they're two years out. And, you know, we get, the city gets our stuff done, and then the applicants are sitting on their hands waiting for the habitat analysis through Fish and Wildlife, United States Fish and Wildlife evaluation that they have to do to determine net loss function and value. So that's where it gets really complicated. Our goal, though, Mr. Graff, is, as you mentioned, to get things through our system as quickly as possible so that they can get into the other agencies and get their projects done. Absolutely.
Thank you. I mean, I appreciate that. I mean, in my line of work now, I deal with federal departments and things like that, and I understand where you're coming from. And then, I mean, as a commission, when we start looking at the other, you know, whether it's the Comprehensive Plan or any other, if we can work on the cost side as well, right? If, if we can help as a city mitigate some of the costs that are going into this, knowing that there's going to be other challenges that they have. But, but thank you for your answer.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
And I'll just add that, um, at a, at a staff level, um, we are completely aware of the frustrations that applicants have. And we do try, um, in the very beginning, because we know that usually we're the first contact, you know, the local government, um, by folks that have a, a project idea in mind. And we let them know, as Mr. Meesmer mentioned, that, you know, hey, these are the other resource agencies that you need to be contacting now, um, to understand what's going to be required as part of your project and get those processes starting. We also try to coordinate with the other agencies the best we can. We invite them to our pre-application meetings. We invite them to site visits for a particular project. So we try to get that, uh, coordination, you know, the best we can. We don't always have the best results because I know that those folks are very, very busy. Um, but, but we are, we are aware of that issue, so thank you.
Well, I think it's important for the public who's listening right now, the five or six that we have, understand that the city is doing their due diligence in this and trying to speed this up as best they can, knowing there's other challenges. So thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. I'm starting to move on to the next.
Go ahead, Ms. Graff.
Thank you. Uh, so the next comment in, and I should say, these comments were from the Anchor Cove Marina Condominium Association Board of Directors. Um, but the next comment that they had was related to the wording in the Shoreline Master Program regarding docks dredging and jetties. Um, and a concern that the Shoreline Master Program wasn't consistent with, as, as technology evolves and different treatment, treatment methods are made available that are non-pollution generating, um, our Shoreline Master Program talks about minimizing the use of treated wood. So they were concerned that that might, um, foreclose different options that might be available in the future that, for treated wood, but it's not pollution generating. So, um, staff was recommending that the Planning Commission consider, um, addressing that issue by change, or, excuse me, striking some language in a couple of different locations. Um, policy 6.3.4 under impacts mitigation and bonding, and DR 9.5.5 regarding docks, piers, and floats. There's some language about, um, use of treated wood being minimized wherever practical. So that's proposed to be struck and for, for Planning Commission's consideration. Please let me know what you think.
I don't know, it's, it's a good question. I had a friend, who they built a houseboat on, um, in Seattle. And, you know, they wanted to make it as environmentally friendly as possible, but that actually made the permitting process harder for them. So, I mean, but I, how do you, how do you allow something when you don't know? You know, so I, I don't know. It's a good question of like, how do you leave the box open enough that you can, you know, in earnest, when they're trying to do something better, that you do it? I'm, I'm not sure what the answer to that is, but I know that my friends who built the houseboat had kind of a nightmare of a permitting process, and they earnestly wanted to build the best, most environmentally responsible houseboat that they could.
Mr. Juretsky.
By striking it, though, we're, we're saying it's okay to use treated wood now. How about if we change that to, at the current time, it's not allowable until such time as that wood is environmentally acceptable?
That would work.
Is there like a building official or some official that you could? I mean, I don't know, I guess, give, give the authority to, to look at the new technology and, I don't know, you know, do a, a review of a paper and give that person some kind of... Who it would be, but that's another suggestion.
Yeah. No, that's a great, a great question. And, um, you know, I think that typically it's the, uh, the other resource agencies that have the expertise on what types of materials. They have standards for what types of materials are allowed. Ultimately, these projects are going to be going through their processes. So, um, that's probably who we would look to in, in making a determination of, of whether the material is appropriate.
So do I read this correctly, then, that the proposed language just states that materials that comply with requirements of federal and state regulations must be used?
Correct.
I had a, another question about, there's a question implied here, and I'm not sure if I rem, if I read this correctly, but the existing wording of section 9.4, 9.6, and 9.8 doesn't recognize interrelated and essential functions of existing breakwaters. Is this implying that, that there's a, there are separate rules or inconsistent rules here? Or I'm not sure what that, what that question is addressing?
You know, I, I'm not completely sure either specifically. They didn't provide a specific reference as to what the, if there were any inconsistencies, what those were. Um, you know, we, we took a look at those, and, um, you know, they're all in compliance with the Shoreline Master Program guidelines from the Department of Ecology. Um, it might, some of this next question might help answer that a bit, or it might provide a bit more context.
Is there something specific with their improvement project that impacts the breakwater that they currently have? Because the reference they're making here is the, you know, incursion of sand coming from boats going by and things like that, and then, and the, and lessening the need to dredge inside the breakwaters. And I'm wondering if there was something specific to their project that is calling into question the need, or the removal, or the modification of a breakwater that they currently have? I, yeah, to add on that, I had the impression that they were suggesting that the rules for one part of the project made it inefficient for a different part of the project. And yet I, I guess I rather assumed there were perhaps different sets of rules, but they all had to be complied with to meet permitting requirements.
I think that's likely the case.
If I may.
Mr. Meesmer.
Yeah, I think you're right on it, you know. Um, a good example of, of years past when the marina was built to current, those rules have drastically changed. Uh, for instance, with the Endangered Species Act and our salmon, you know, being listed. And instead of having that breakwater all the way down to the bottom, there's now about a four-foot break underneath it for the water to flow through and allow salmon and other fish to flow through. And so that contributes to some of the silt buildup that they then have to dredge out every couple of years. And then when they dredge... of years. And then when they dredge, new regulations require that they do a vegetation study so that they're not disturbing the eel grass, and/or if they are, then they have to replant it somewhere else. So those, the Fish and Wildlife and the Army Corps of Engineers regulations have, they've really grown over the years. And we rely on Fish and Wildlife and the Corps, you know, to regulate all of that. You know, we, what we're looking at is, okay, well, from our position, you know, with piers and docks and the type of materials used, you know, we can definitely regulate that. We rely some on the Corps and on Fish and Wildlife. And then our building department also, we're always looking to see what kind of new technologies are out there, you know, for treated wood and stuff, because not only do they use it in water, but they use it up above on land, too.
Thank you. That was a good description of what seemed to be happening here. And I guess my, my assumption here is that the city's rules incorporate by reference all of the state laws that are required to be met. And we don't have the option of offering the mitigation for the impact of those laws.
Not at the local level.
Thank you. Any other comments on this question?
Moving along. Thank you very much. So the third one, I think, is kind of something we've already, or we were just discussing. This is a commenter talking about examples of a permitting process for repair of that existing breakwater, and requesting that the SMP be updated to better reflect the realities of existing marine operations and resolve competing interests and conflicting objectives with multiple agencies. So I think we kind of just covered that. You know, I wish we could fix all those issues in this, in the SMP, but I, it's just outside of what we're able to do. Anybody have a comment on that one?
As a wannabe boater, with marinas being an endangered species in the state of Washington, I think we should do what we can to protect those marinas that we currently have, to ensure that they thrive and are available for use, should I ever be lucky enough to get a slip. But that's a different story. But it almost, it almost seems like, based on your description, that, you know, in an attempt to do the environmentally right thing by replacing creosol pilings, trips the requirement to then look at the breakwater, which may require some modification of the breakwater now, which may trip another check to go. And so it's no grandfather clauses in any of these processes where, you know, because you built it in 1950, whatever, that, you know, we'll find mitigation for you to be able to do as much as you can to protect the environment, but understanding that maybe you can't do everything. And I don't know if the city has an opportunity to address that with the other agencies involved in the approval process.
Great question, Mr. Graff. If I might give an example, the city actually has a couple of boat ramps and a few docks in the area. We're required, within the next three years, to remove all of our creosol piles and replace them with either concrete or steel, and the same for the docks. And that's throughout any of the marinas in town. There's also quite a bit of the area where the marinas are that is actually owned by DNR. And DNR will come in when they renew their leases every five or 10 years, and evaluate it and let you know that you need to do things to bring it up to their environmental standards for that date. So when you say grandfather, not very much grandfathered anymore in marinas. You know, I've got, I've been working with one of our marinas in town. They have to put skylights in their covered moorage areas, and they have to provide graded docking, docks, so that they'll have light that gets through for the sea life. And, you know, that's a, that's a fairly good expense, but we, we can't do anything with the SMP to change that, unfortunately.
Yeah, marinas that are located on aquatic lands that are managed by Department of Natural Resources, they have a lot of, DNR has a lot of negotiating power because they want to get their lease renewed. So, so there are a lot of requirements that they have to meet.
So it looks like moving on to comment number two, and an entirely different topic.
Thank you. Yeah, so the second comment letter we received from the Skagit Land Trust. And I just wanted to say, I meant to say this earlier, but I really do appreciate the three comments that we did receive. Folks put a lot of time and thought, and I found them, we found them very helpful. So thank you to those who participated. So the Skagit Land Trust provided some comments encouraging, providing some support for the city adapting local planning documents and procedures to take climate change into account. And the city's responses that we agree, or the city staff's responses that we agree with addressing sea level rise at a policy level in the Shoreline Master Program, I think that makes sense. And we'll be talking about a couple of policies that we've suggested adding here in a couple of minutes. But then also, the planning commission is aware of the work that's been done on the floodplain management regulations, including consideration of sea level rise, which resulted in the city staff, and subsequently, the planning commission recommending raising the height from one foot to two feet above base flood elevation. So I just, I just mentioned that as an example of another way that is not specifically in the Shoreline Master Program that the city is addressing and aware of sea level, climate change resulting in sea level rise. Any, anybody want to say anything about one or two? Number three, the fourth comment recommends that the city use the same sea level rise and climate change calculations for all planning documents and regulations. And we think, we also think that this is a good idea. And we are proposing to add some policy language within Section 4.8, recognizing the use and development of a consistent sea level rise projection across all city documents, as well as a periodic reassessment of the, of the conditions and science at the time. The fourth comment discusses the adopted FEMA floodplain maps and their lack of accounting for sea level rise. And the city's response is that, yes, the adopted maps are from 2003, and adoption of updated maps is on indefinite hold due to various difficulties and disagreements in mapping the Skagit River levees. And there aren't separate FEMA maps for the county and the cities. It's all in one map. So that's been a challenging process to get those maps updated. However, the city has recently undertaken preliminary flood mapping that combines sea level rise with FEMA regulatory maps. And actually, I think tomorrow, staff is meeting with FEMA to discuss flood responses and the projected rollout of the updated map. So we'll have more information on that, hopefully, soon. So no, this response is mostly just providing information, no update, or, excuse me, no changes recommended as a, as a response to that one. Number five, so this comment is suggesting that the city determine how much sea level rise has risen since the date of the last FEMA map in 2003, and also deciding which metric the city will use for predicted sea level rise for the next 30, 50, and 80 years. And they're strongly recommending that the city be planning for at least the lifespan of a typical structure that would be placed on the shoreline. And as a response, city staff is, well, as I mentioned, as part of the floodplain management regulations update, the city commissioned the study by Coastal Geological Services, and that study recommended requiring two feet freeboard above base flood elevation. And that reflects, that would protect structures with a 50% or greater probability of inundation over the next 80 years. And so I think that, that addresses that comment. And that change is going to the city council for review and adoption in the coming weeks. Any questions on that one? Okay, number six. So this is recommending that the city acknowledge the need to plan for sea level rise and climate change in the goals, objectives, and policies of the Shoreline Master Program as a first step. And yes, staff level, we absolutely agree. And we've put forth these potential policies for planning commission's consideration that would be added to Section 4.8 Restoration and Adaptive Management. And they are as follows: Choose a sea level rise projection that is appropriate for the city, considering all best available science and potential unknowns. Revisit sea level rise projections every eight years, and revise if necessary. Recognize and monitor the potential effects of climate change as additional scientific information becomes available, and encourage shoreline development and redevelopment, which will deal with sea level rise in the following order: avoid, retreat, protect, and accommodate. Then the city should develop plans to address the impacts of sea level rise and climate change in collaboration with impacted property owners, the community, and the Department of Ecology. And finally, consider sea level rise impacts, the city should consider sea level rise impacts as it plans for new development, as well as other public and private shoreline projects, consistent with the best available science and the life cycle of the improvements. Any discussion on that item?
A kind of a related question. Is, does the comprehensive plan, does any of the long-range planning take it into account? I mean, maybe you've discussed that already, but could you just help me figure out how that fits into the?
Yeah, thank you. So, yes, the comprehensive plan does include a couple of different policies regarding the city planning for climate change and sea level rise. The Shoreline Master Program goals and policies are technically a part of the comprehensive plan. So I think adding some language into that section makes sense, because everybody thinks, you know, Shoreline Master Program, sea level rise. But yes, there are, to answer your question, I think there are some existing policies that don't conflict with these proposed new policies.
So is the plan to put all of that in the SMP that's up for vote tonight?
That's the recommendation for planning commission's consideration.
So I'm a little unclear, then. It says, "Policies to consider include," but these are not written very much like policy statements. Or perhaps I'm missing something here. So are you, are these bullet points then proposed to become SMP policies under this section?
Yes.
So, for example, choose a sea level rise projection. Who, how, when, what?
I mean, these are all really nice feel-good statements, and I think they're all things that the city should consider doing. But, man, you know, we're setting ourselves up for, you know, a huge effort here. Expense, time discussing this, the studies. I mean, the best practice, the best science isn't even available. We're still waiting for maps that are 20 years old. And, and, you know, I don't mean to stir the pot, because we talked about this a few weeks back, but the maps that we were shown and the properties that are being impacted by this are less than five, I think, if I'm correct. And so the city is setting themselves up to spend a lot of time, a lot of money, a lot of effort addressing a sea level situation, right, which I believe it should be addressed, that may only impact five properties. And, you know, where that gets stacked out on the priority list for the city, I think will be interesting. But depending on how this goes in the SMP, we may elevate it to a level that may not necessarily be addressed for a long period of time. I, I don't, just, food for thought.
Any other commissioners have thoughts? Dr. Martin?
I want to say, I actually thought the way that you worded, especially that first one, was really smart, because this is a, more of a planning document. It's, it's more of a higher level and saying, we know that there's something to do with sea level rise, and we're going to use the best science available. And that helps me with, you know, well, that science isn't any good, and this one is better. So I liked it.
Yeah. I think the, the way that the policies are written are to provide a, yeah, guidance for future potential planning activities by the city. Doesn't provide, doesn't say you must do this by then, or, you know, by this particular point. So, you know, they're proposed for your consideration if you have changes or things you'd like to see added.
I mean, honestly, I don't, I, I, I think it's a visionary thing, like the comprehensive plan, and they don't have teeth. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know how you're setting yourself up to say that, you know, how it hurts the city to do that. I mean, you know, climate change itself is a bigger issue. And like, you know, I work for DNR at Island County, and they're talking about doing a climate resilience plan, which is more encompassing. Like, when we had the discussion earlier about climate change, you know, we were like, yes, it only affects these five properties, but there's going to be flooding, there's going to be extreme temperatures. So it's a bigger picture issue. But I think, like, you know, this just says, like, that the Shoreline Master Plan knows that it happens. Hence, for me, I mean, it just says that the city's aware of it and is part of its planning processes. So I don't, I don't see it as a liability for the city.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think those, those two comments helped me, I think, get a better picture of how this fits into the document. So are this, are these more along the lines of policy direction or guidance, would you say?
Yes. They're policy level, yeah, statements, right. They're not development regulations.
Okay. Thank you.
If I might, Mr. Chair, too. And then Ms. Graj has done a really good job of showing in this matrix, for instance, in this particular one under item seven, the policies would show up under SMP Section 4.8 in the Shoreline Master Program.
Thank you. Moving along?
Okay, thank you. Comment number seven was regarding the sea level rising at least 50% likely range over the next 50 years, suggesting using that metrics and metric. And that comment was addressed in 2.5 above, which, there is no 2.5. I think we, we addressed that with the, the discussion about the frequently flooded areas, the floodplain management regulations, and the, using the metric of 50% likelihood of sea level rise being at two feet over the next 80 years. Number eight suggested adding language about sea level rise due to climate change into Chapter Six, Section 6.8, frequently flooded areas and tsunami inundation areas. And the city staff response was that we agree that that additional language could be added into that section. Mention of sea level rise due to climate change can be added as a contributing factor to periodic flooding in addition to large rainfall events, high tides, and wind-driven waves. So that's just, it's a sort of a explanatory paragraph in the Shoreline Master Program, and it'd just be adding that, that language for awareness. Comment number 10 suggests adding new language, avoiding construction in tidal and storm surge areas. And city staff is recommending that a policy be added And city staff is recommending that a policy be added for the city considers strategies to address concerns in tidal and storm surge areas. I think that's a good idea. But we don't quite know what yet, so having a policy in there to guide us in the future will be helpful. Comment number, comment number 11 suggests adding stronger mitigation language to meet the requirements of no net loss for new or expanded hardshore armoring. And city staff believes that the development regulation in 9.11.4 addresses this recommendation. And I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me. Excuse me, please just give me a moment. Okay, so, back on track. So this comment was, they actually made some suggestions about language to add. So the first one was use of hardshore, hard armoring is prohibited except where there is no reasonable alternative to protect an existing structure. And the development regulation that I mentioned, 9.11.4, already contains or meets the intent of the language out there proposing. We believe that addresses that particular comment. And then the second suggested change was to add some language that new development must be located, designed to avoid the need for future shoreline stabilization to the extent feasible during the lifetime of the structure, considering best available science, including projections of sea level rise. And we, the Shoreline Master Program already does include a development regulation, 9.11.6, that addresses a lot of those elements, but we could add, considering sea level rise projections as part of that determination about whether future shoreline stabilization would be required for a new project. Okay, moving on to the third comment letter that we received. This one was from Kathleen Lawrence Flanagan. And I didn't have any notes on that one, so I will. So she had a couple of comments that were more just statements that we are not proposing any changes in response to regarding the replacement of shell with another grammatically correct option. She thought that was a good idea. Using consistent wording, that the planning, community, and economic development director is the shoreline administrator. That's helpful. Thank you for your comment. She recommended adding a hyperlink to the table that's referenced in a particular section. And our response is just that now that we are moving the shoreline regulations into the Unified Development Code, there will be that ability to have hyperlinks between different sections of the regulation. So within the shoreline regulations and the zoning code or the land use permit procedure. So that's one of the benefits that I'm really excited about, is just making it easier to navigate these documents. So... There was also some discussion about, concern about notice requirements, length of comment periods, and appeal processes. And all of those standards are not actually in the Shoreline Master Program. They're separate in Table 1920 of the development regulations. And we weren't proposing any changes to that, that table at this point. Another comment about providing a link. Yes, we'll be able to do that. Appreciation for expectations stated clearly. Number seven is related to non-conforming uses in structures and wanting to know whether the document would address sea level rise. And so our response is to see the responses above to Skagit Land Trust's comments. One of the sections talks about the shoreline administrator determining the replacement cost of a structure for the purpose of determining requirements for non-conforming structures. And is that a reasonable expectation? And yes, we feel that that is. The shoreline administrator typically determines the structures' replacement costs based on Skagit County assessor's assessed value or professional bid used to determine the replacement cost.
Mr. Chair. I was going to ask clarification from the shoreline administrator. You know, I thought they brought up a pretty good point about an insurance appraiser or adjuster making some determination. I'm interested to hear, the Skagit County Assessor's assessed value of the property, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think they necessarily actually visit the property and make an assessment for like, I don't know, I think it's more market than it is replacement cost, labor, materials, and all of that kind of stuff that an insurance, you know, kind of a replacement cost calculation would take into account, so.
Thank you. You make a really good point. The Skagit County Assessor's Office doesn't always come out every year to do a proper assessment. And so what you might have is a couple of years lag time. And, you know, they'll come out, they'll go outside of the home and do a really rough square footage thing. And so it's not one of the most accurate ways of determining the valuation of a place. But that's what we have to work with.
But in all likelihood, your assessed value probably isn't necessarily used by the insurance company for a replacement, so it's kind of a, you're both doing it, but for two different purposes, I take it?
Correct, two different purposes, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. So the next comment was asking about cooperation between public agencies occupying waterfront lands, and will the hillside walking paths and slope on the eastern slope of the ferry terminal ever be appropriately structured and vegetated? And we took a look in the city's capital facilities plan, and there actually is a project in the 2022 to 2027 timeframe, identifying funds in 2026 to complete East Ship Harbor Wetland Interpretive Trail and connecting to the ferry landing. So there is a plan in the CFP to address that area. Number 10, located land transportation routes should be located as far as reasonably possible from the water's edge with the least environmental impact to the shoreline, except where needed to access water-dependent uses. And I couldn't identify a comment to be able to respond to there. So just said, thank you, thank you for your comment. Number 11 is talking about protection and enhancement for the Gwemyss Channel Trail, so project-specific action, and talking about no plan for the Gwemyss Channel Trail yet shared with the public. It's difficult to know how will this policy be achieved on future parts. And our response is that future plans for the Gwemyss Channel Trail will undergo a public involvement process, including SEPA review, public comments on individual permit applications that come through the process once we get to that point prior to trail development. So there will be public opportunities throughout that, that process to provide comment and input and understand what, what the proposals are. Number 12 is just talking about the lack of reference to access and parking within this specific regulation, 5.6.4, related to reuse of historic overwater structures. And the response is, is just that projects that occur within shoreline jurisdiction are subject to all of the shoreline regulations, but they also have to meet all of the other underlying zoning requirements, parking requirements, landscaping requirements, all of that stuff. And I think that adding the shoreline regulations into the Unified Development Code with, along with all the rest of those requirements, will help clarify what, what standards apply in addition to shoreline regulations. Number, almost done. Number 13, it's hope that deviations from required setbacks are granted with considerable discrimination. Is there a system in place and available to the public for tracking these? And just in response, that particular section that is being referenced is related to variances to the minimum shoreline setback for residence, for residential development beyond, there's an allowance for an administrative approval of a reduction in shoreline setback if certain conditions are met. And that particular regulation is talking about reductions beyond what is allowed administratively, have to go through a shoreline variance process, which gets approved by the Department of Ecology as well. And I, we put in this matrix that there's no system currently set up that tracks shoreline variances, and that's not entirely accurate. We don't have a special system that's just set up for shoreline variances, but we do have all of our permit applications and documents available to the public on the public portal on our website. So if folks know of a project, they're able to get in there and click on the link and see all of the documents that are available. Number 14 is just talking about, that the updated regulation seems stronger, and one can only hope there will be better enforcement of them. There are stipulations for five-year survival rates of vegetation. And she has a question about how that is enforced and whose responsibility. And so in response, the applicant is typically responsible for tracking plant survival, monitoring performance standards. And they provide monitoring reports to the city annually on how things are, are working. And I just wanted to also mention that the city, as I think I mentioned this already, but I'm excited about it, the city was recently awarded a Department of Ecology grant to fund a shoreline permit tracking system that will take a look at how past projects have been permitted, whether they, you know, met all of the requirements of the Shoreline Master Program, and identify areas where we can strengthen that, that process and tracking and monitoring. So we're excited about that.
Mr. Chair. I think the real concern here is enforcement, right? And so is this tracking system then going to help the city determine when their self-reporting on themselves, where we have to send somebody out to make sure that they either adhere to the requirement or find some mitigation? Because I think it's the enforcement word that's missing here, but if this tracking system is going to take care of that, then it sounds like a, a good thing.
A couple of, so yeah, I think it'll help us to identify areas of improvement overall, but we also have, we will have a permit system here shortly that is, has much better functionality than what we currently have, so we can set for different properties and permits reminders, you know, here, this, this particular report is due a year from now, and it would go to whoever's responsible for that project. Like, so if I'm not here anymore, then some, the new person would know, you know, this, this project has a report due. So I think it'll really help our capabilities in making sure that we're following through on, on those.
Generating more reports is great. It's kind of like the office, right? But, you know, the enforcement thing, right? If the report generates a requirement to go out there and make sure that they're dealing with fallen trees or slides that are being caused because they're doing something on their property that they shouldn't have been doing, I think that's where, right?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Meesmer.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think that the system that Ms. Graves is talking about is, it's going to be a, it's going to be really something that will work for us. Right now, we don't have anything to trigger us to go out, except for, we might put something on our calendar to go and look at something in two years, hoping that we're still there, you know? But additionally, I'd like to add that we, we now have on staff an environmental planner. And so this person is very educated with, as a wetland specialist and a shoreline specialist, which is great to have for us. It's great to have, because that person will be able to recognize issues when this report comes in and says, hey, you need to go look at site number, whatever address. They're going to go out and look at it and say, hey, they failed.
And presumably, your backstop is complaints. If someone's able to look at a particular site and determine that it's not up to snuff in complaints, then you get triggered at the very least. You have the public watching for you.
Correct.
Ms. Graves, thank you very much for a pretty thorough analysis here. For the commissioners, are there comments or questions? Dr. Martin?
Mr. Chair, first of all, congratulations on that grant. I think it sounds great. If we could, for just a second, go back to 2.9? I just had a quick question about that.
Is this the right one?
I can't see from there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's the one.
Section 8.4 suggests adding, oh, I missed that one. Is that what you were going to point out? Okay, thank you. Yeah, so this particular comment suggested adding indication that the ordinary high-watermark will move landward with sea level rise. And yes, the city agrees that we could certainly add some, some language indicating that. The definition of ordinary high-watermark in the Shoreline Master Program and in the Shoreline Management Act actually talk about the fact that it's, it's not a static location. It's moving all the time for different reasons, erosion and storms and whatnot. But yes, certainly, sea level rise could also be a reason that it moves. So we think it makes sense to, to add that.
Okay, that's, I just wondered, when it said you're going to consider adding language, I thought, well, what does that mean exactly?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments from commissioners?
I want to say, I think staff did a really good job of addressing all the comments, and so, my compliments.
Thank you. The watershed company was a huge help in assembling these as well. Okay, oh, sorry, I had a couple more slides.
Okay.
So, yes, so if there's no other questions about those items, the Planning Commission certainly could start deliberations if you would like. And I was just pointing out the section that talks about the things that the Planning Commission is supposed to consider in your deliberations. And that's 1916080. So thinking about public hearing testimony, recommendations, and analysis from city advisory groups, staff recommendations, legal advice, consistency with the comp plan. And then if you are so inclined to make a recommendation to city council, staff did prepare a draft, recorded motion document that contains some draft findings of fact and recommendation for, for your consideration that was also included in your packet. Staff, if you're interested in staff's recommendation, is that the Planning Commission should recommend to city council adoption of the amendments to the Shoreline Master Program presented in the second draft dated February 16, 2022, subject to the Program presented in the second draft dated February 16th, 2022, subject to the changes identified in Attachment A, which I'm calling Attachment A, just that public comment summary and recommended changes. And also codification of the regulatory provisions into AMC 1972, and relocation of the goals and policies to a new shoreline element of the comp plan. And then also to approve the amendments to the shoreline environment designations. And we haven't talked about those in a while, but I think you all, if you have any questions about what those were, okay. As shown in Attachment B. So that's staff's recommendation. I'm not going to go through that. That was just a summary of all of the recommended changes, but I think you're, you're good on that. And this was just the document that was provided in your pocket. So I will hand it over to you.
I'm operating a little slowly this evening. I want to double check, is there any public hearing requirement at this point? None? Do we have any comments from the public?
Mr. Chair, we do not.
Thank you. Any further deliberation by the, by the council or the commission members? In that event, I move to recommend approval of the proposed amendments to the Shoreline Master Program, Draft Two, with staff recommended changes in the memo dated April 8th, 2022, including codification of the shoreline regulations into Anacortes Municipal Code, Chapter 19.72 Shorelines, and a relocation of the shoreline goals and policies into a new shoreline element of the comprehensive plan. I think I caught all that. It's been moved and seconded.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would that also include the proposed amendments to the shoreline environment designation map? Did you mention that one?
I will take that under advisement. Yes, we will, I will include that in my motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll, take roll?
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Mullinow?
Yes.
Mr. McKenzie?
Yes.
Madam Ruther?
Yes.
Ms. Jersky?
Yes.
Madam Martin?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Our business is concluded for the evening, and thank you, everybody, for all your hard work. We will close the meeting and see you next week.